Welcome back to our old council chambers for this evening. Madam Clerk, may I have your call, please?
Mayor Justin Towndale.
Present.
Councillors Claude McIntosh.
Here.
Dean Hollingsworth.
Present.
Modest Dupell.
Present.
Sarah Good.
Present.
Inne Bial.
Present.
Councillors Elaine McDonald.
Present.
Sid Gardner.
You see.
Dennis Sabureng.
Present.
Todd Bennett.
Present.
And Frank Gunjo.
Present.
All present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We are gathered on the traditional territory of the Hara Nasani peoples, the Mohawks of Akwassasani, the original keepers of this land. As settlers, we are grateful for the opportunity to meet here, and we thank all the generations of people who have taken care of this land for thousands of years. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please? Councillor Bennett, Councillor McDonald, any discussion? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Any disclosures of interest? Okay, seeing none, motion to go in committee of the whole. Councillor McIntosh, Councillor Gardner, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Reports.
I think before we go to a report, we have a presentation from Tracy Bailey and Mike Foffruth on the water and wastewater budget.
Good afternoon. Through you, Mr. Mayor, further to the conversation... Sorry about that. Mike and I are gonna have to get pretty close here. Further to the conversation we had at the council meeting of December the 5th regarding water meters, Michael and I are going to present a few slides that will speak to the city's existing rate structure, the inequities within this structure, the benefits that both customers and the city will see with the implementation of water meters, why we are looking at installing smart meters, and the progress that we have made to date for this project. So, existing rate structure. Customers charge a flat rate with water using fixtures. So, we have plus or minus 17,100 residential accounts, plus or minus 900 industrial or commercial institutional accounts. Typically, these are low-volume, small business. And for these fixed-rate customers, billing occurs based on the street name for the property. So, A through K are billed and payments are due the end of January and July. And streets that begin with L through Y are billed with payments that are due April and October. Customers that are charged a constant volume-based rate, so we have about plus or minus 275-metered ICNI accounts typically are high-volume, large businesses, and they are billed April and October. Statistics found that households on a flat-rate system use 52% more water, 361 liters a day, than households paying per volume of water used, 238 liters a day.
So, this slide gives a quick overview of the existing water meters we have in place, as well as our residential pilot program. So, we have about 1,900 water meters installed in residential homes voluntarily through the pilot program, which began in 2007, in order to monitor consumption for the rate study and the Conservation and Servicing Master Plan, as well as to promote conservation initiatives. We have about 275 water meters installed in ICNI, which are charged a volume-based rate. As Tracy mentioned, these are typically high-volume, larger businesses. We have 900 water meters installed in ICNI being charged a flat rate, which are typically the low-volume, small businesses. It is important to note that the existing water meters are first generation and are at the end of their service life and need to be replaced. The existing meters require door-to-door readings when or if possible, which is driving at a very slow speed, which is a time-intensive process. The existing meters do not have AMI technology, which allows for remote measurement, troubleshooting, data analysis, leak detection, or allow user to monitor or mitigate consumption. AMI technology allows for real-time measurement and the identification of problems for both the resident and city staff. These existing meters are nearing the end of their service life and need to be replaced. It is much more cost-efficient as part of a citywide program. The ICNI meters are much larger and are much more costly to replace, most efficient to remove all the existing meters as part of a citywide program. The Ministry of Environment Conservation and Parks requires a water conservation program as part of a municipal drinking water license. The MECP provides guidelines towards financially sustainable drinking water systems, which include transparent public engagement, generation of sustainable revenues for reliable services, and future rehabilitation or replacement of infrastructure. And most importantly, equitable outcomes and promotion of water conservation through users paying for services they receive, similar to other utilities. All meter studies, relevant guidelines, and conservation programs identify that water conservation efforts require an economic incentive in order to be effective. The MECP, AWWA, FCM all recommend metering as a best management practice.
We're gonna speak to inequities of the existing rate structure. So, inequity between low-volume residential to high-volume residential. Low-volume users paying the same or more than high-volume users due to the fixture count. So, two homes that... Sorry. Fixtures counts have no bearing on water usage. And so, we have a couple of examples. So, two homes using exactly the same amount of water, but have a different number of fixtures. Or a single person living in a home with the same number of fixtures as an active family of four are paying the same for water. It is important to note that the data we have collected indicates that 76% of residents will see a reduction in their billing. This is because of the inequities between the residential and metered customers. Residential would also see a minimum rate increase post-implementation due to the meter size per the rate structure. We have inequities between the residential and the ICNI. So, ICNI customers consume 33% of water, but they pay 16% of the revenue. The master plan corrects the imbalance over time in order to limit the impact to our high-volume or large businesses. Residential and low-volume ICNI are paying for water consumed right now by large businesses. Inequity between low-volume, small business to high-volume, large business. So, customers build at a flat rate for the same number of fixtures, but have very different usage patterns. Small businesses, low volume, are paying more than they should. Many of the plus or minus 900 ICNI low-volume users would see a savings. Some examples would be the same number of fixtures for an office building. Though one business has five employees and another has 10, that would be pretty minor. But another example would be the same number of fixtures, but one business uses more water because of the type of business that they are. So, a dentist's office or a hair salon versus an insurance company. So, there's anomalies exist between our customers that are on flat rate and consumptive. The same types of customers exhibiting similar usage patterns pay considerably different amounts depending if they are charged at the flat rate or a consumptive rate. Examples would be two businesses, one with a flat rate per fixture and one metered consumptive rate are paying significantly different amounts. In the two properties we looked at, the business is paying about 1.3x the amount that a business on a flat rate is paying. The best way to correct all inequities in the system is through the implementing of a citywide water meter program, following the recommendations of the Water Conservation Servicing Master Plan, where customers will pay for what they use.
So, the next few slides will go over the benefits of meters to both the customers, as well as the city. So, the customer benefits are improved customer service through the use of near-real-time data, identification of unusual water use and real-time customer notification. So, that allows users to make correction and make necessary repairs, as well as allows the city to address any maintenance issues as they arise. Improved water use management by customers, and the ability to pay for the water used, and the ability for the customer to manage their bill. So, as Tracy mentioned earlier, a preliminary analysis of the voluntary meter data that we have collected indicated that 76% of residents would pay less under the proposed rate structure due to cost recovery inequities present in the current fee structure. And they would also see a minimal rate increase post-implementation based off the proposed rate structure. So, these are some of the benefits which we're seeing in other communities following meter implementation for both customers, as well as the city. So, the results of a Vancouver metering study found that 80% of homes with a meter installed use less water than the average consumption volume that determine the flat rate of water billing, which means 80% of residents would have seen a savings after meters were implemented. Prior to the implementation of water metering in the city of Toronto, the city was charging a flat rate for un-metered customers based off of 300 cubic meters of water per year. Once meters were installed in these dwellings, the average residential bill dropped by approximately 15%. So, as we identified in other reports to council, the city of Guelph reports their investment over the last 10 years of 10.2 million in water conservation and efficiency programs resources has resulted in over $30 million in savings over that same period for the repairs. So, the following are the benefits to the city. Easier administration, reallocation of resources towards monitoring and repair instead of meter reading, improved early leak detection, which will address water losses, improved identification and planning for rehab and expansion work, so infrastructure projects, water demand objectives, so lower water demand, which provides additional capacity at both the plants and within the sewer system to accommodate future growth, and reduced environmental footprint and alignment with community strategic plan, as well as we'd be following industry best practices. So, lower water usage in the community will provide additional capacity at both the water purification plant and wastewater treatment plant to accommodate any future growth, provide additional capacity and reduce flows in the sanitary sewer and combined sewer system, which contributes to a lower risk of flooding, as well as a lower chance of combined sewer overflows, allow for any deferral of growth-based infrastructure projects, reduces operating and maintenance costs at both plants, as well as lowers energy usage and greenhouse gas emissions. In the blue box, you can see a city of Calgary study. Once water meters were implemented in 2002, the water withdrawn from their source measured 18% less in 2016 than it did in 2003, despite a population growth of 30% over that timeframe. So, why smart meters? So, why smart meters with AMI technology? So, it eliminates the need for door-to-door meter reading, troubleshooting. Everything is uploaded automatically to our billing system. Enhanced water consumption monitoring, more accurate water bills. Any bill problems are addressed immediately, easier, faster leak detection and repair, higher water and energy savings, as well as a lower environmental impact.
This slide provides the progress to date that we have made in the move to citywide water meters, and it includes completing a water conservation servicing master plan. Using data collected from our pilot metered accounts, we completed a rate study. We hired a conservation coordinator and contracted a project manager. To date, the city has committed just over 1.7 million to the project. So, that is our presentation for council.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey and Mr. Foffruth. Questions from council? Councillor Good, start a speaker's list.
Thank you for preparing this and taking the time to speak with me also this afternoon. I appreciate that. I do have a question in regards to the 76% indicated that would see a savings. And my question in regards to this number is, this data is coming from the voluntary residential meters, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Do we have... Like, do we know in terms of those residents that have voluntarily installed meters what their housing size is like, and if it's representative of the diversity of housing in Cornwall?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we would have to look at that, to be honest, and report back to you.
And the reason why I ask this is because my inkling is that those people who would voluntarily want to install water meters may already be quite conscientious about their water consumption, and that it may not be reflective of the general population. And so, that's the number that I like. I like seeing that 75, roughly, percent of the population in Cornwall of residential units, customers, would see a savings. However, if this number is based on customers who are already aware of their own consumption and conserving water, I am a little bit fearful that that number wouldn't necessarily translate to our overall population. Do you have any feedback on that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, through you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, so you are correct that it is based off of our voluntary water meter program. We can't... Unfortunately, without water meters, we can't determine it for the rest of the residential population. Based off of our rate study that we've completed, I think we are confident that the proposed rate structure would be beneficial to the majority of residents. This is... You're correct that this is based off of the voluntary meter program. Looking at that data, though, we do see a high percentage of high-water users in that data, even though they are on the voluntary water meter program. To say that it's exactly representative of the entire residential program, I can't tell you that without water meters in place. But we do have a high percentage, or a reasonable percentage of high-water users within that data. And I guess maybe else to add, maybe something else to add, is that number is... Seems to be representative of what other communities that have done post-implementation studies on water meters have found. Can I tell you it's exactly what it is? I can't. But is it reflective of what others have found and what we expect to see, given the inequity in place between ICNI or non-residential and residential? It seems like it. So, yeah, hopefully that answers your question.
It does. And I wanted to ask as well, just looking at, I believe this was a report from 2021, where it showed the current average at that time anyways, at 269 cubic meters, with a target for an average in Cornwall here of 203 cubic meters. Is that average based, again, on those water meters that have been installed? Or is that based on a total water usage for residential?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is based off of a total production at the plant, looking at and then deducting ICNI from it, and also our voluntary water meter data.
Okay. And looking at that current average, we would see that that level, 269 cubic meters, would see a savings with this model that we were representing?
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Hollingsworth.
Thank you, Worshe. If I'm gonna refrain, wait if there's a motion or debate. But I don't have any questions.
Councillor Gardner.
Thank you very much for the information. One of the questions I had, our former mayor, who was in favor of water meters, as a matter of fact, told me that in all the years he had volunteered for a water meter, nobody ever checked it. So, where do you get the figures from?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we collect the data. So, we have a water meter technician that collects the data from the residential and the ICNI water meters we have in place.
So, you actually have figured?
Absolutely.
What I'm told that they weren't checked, however. There's a few things that I'd like to know. Number one, nothing on here says anything about the cost. And we looked at $15,800,000. The interest rates have gone to 4.25%, and apparently this week, we're probably gonna get another rise. So, what's that gonna do to the cost of our water meters, that $15 million?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the city does only borrow whenever we incur expenses. So, we're not borrowing today. In fact, we're probably not borrowing for another year, year and a half. I can't tell you what the market will look like then. I can tell you that the city does receive very competitive borrowing rates. In fact, the market is a bit lopsided right now. We invested $10 million and got 6.05%, and we just brought a bylaw to council to borrow money, and not one of those loans were over 5%. And we were expecting rates much higher than that. So, we are... We do get very competitive rates, but I wouldn't be able to speculate at this time.
So, right now, that 4.25, you can't give me a figure of what would happen to $15,800,000, right?
I don't have a mortgage calculator with me right now, but that, the principal and interest would be added to the operating budget for the water service.
Okay. The other thing that I have a question about, and I've had a question about it for quite a while. How are... And I got it from the residents. How are these water meters installed? Indoors, outdoors? Where are they installed? And the worry that the residents had was digging up their front yards or some people with porches in the front, seeing their porches being destroyed.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it's dependent on the use of the building. Some are inside and some are on the exterior for multi-unit residential or potentially ICNI as well. But, yeah.
So, that would mean most residential would be outside, right?
No, no.
Okay. And leak detection, and again, I've brought this up before, and I wanna bring it up again. When I asked our former manager of Public Works, if how many times did we have leak detection between our city pipes, which are along the roads, and between there and the residence? And there was no answer. So, can you answer that question?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, we collect... Anytime we complete a repair on a water service between the water main to the property line, we record that and we have that number, and I could absolutely provide it to you.
I would like it provided, because the former manager said that he couldn't give it to me. It was 10%, maybe 15%, but he wasn't sure.
Yeah, we could... We definitely have... Through you, Mr. Mayor, apologize. We definitely have the amount of water repairs we have made between the property line and the water main.
I'll just let it go for now, please. Thank you.
Councillor McIntosh.
Thank you. Michael, I wanna go back at a question that Sid asked about the voluntary meters.
Yeah.
I know of three people that said they've never seen anybody come in their house.
They don't have... Through you, Mr. Mayor, it's AMR technology, so they just have to drive by.
Don't have to? They just drive by?
Drive by.
Okay, that answers that question. The ones you installed the meters in, you have any idea what size of families? Did you try to get a cross-section? Husband, wife, one kid, husband, wife, four kids?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we would have to do an analysis to get that information. Could we get it? We have the addresses and we have data, but I don't have it handy.
But it's fair to say, the bigger the family, the more water is being consumed, laundry, whatnot?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, that in general. However, a lot of it depends on a number of other factors, like, do you have pools? Do you water your lawn? Do you clean your driveway with your hose? Do you have any... One of the biggest factors is, do you have any leaks on the private side of your system? So, yeah, in general, does size of family impact water use? Yes. But there are many other factors, I guess, that you have to consider.
Fair enough, yeah. The other... Another thing, too, is that we haven't talked about how these water meters are gonna be paid by the residents. There'll be a surcharge, I understand?
Yes, correct, yeah, surcharge.
Ballpark figure?
It was $80, if I recall, offhand.
Yeah. So, you're gonna have to save $80 worth of water to break even?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, that's correct. But we're also correcting the imbalance between ICNI and residential, which is considerable. And then there's the high-water users as well. So, yeah.
I guess, have we determined... Right now, most landlords pay the water bill.
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Most probably all of them.
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
Would it... Could there be a changeover where the landlord says the tenant now pays the water bill?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's something we're considering right now as we go through it with the project manager, looking at what other municipalities are doing in those circumstances you're speaking to, and what's the best for the city. There's multiple implications that we gotta consider. To be on separate meters, you have to have separate water systems internal to the house, which creates some issues. So, anyway, it's something like, I don't have that answer for you today. It's something we're working through with the project manager, and it will be included before we go... It will be reported back as part of our project manager's work before we...
Just one other, we've done surveys with municipalities about consumption. Have we ever asked about how landlords...
Yeah, we have, and it's often a case-by-case basis. So, some just meter the one and charge the one service connection to the building with multi-residential, and then charge the landowner still or the owner of the property still. You can install meters in each subunit, but it's honestly, it's a case-by-case basis, because you could have interconnected plumbing. The primary, to my knowledge, just meter the one connection and charge the landowner.
Yeah. It's a question I've been asked by landlords.
Yeah.
And they say they're not getting any answers.
We have the same question, and we're working through it with the project manager. And we won't really have a plan for what the question you're asking, I guess, for another four, six months.
You gave us a ballpark figure on what the meters are gonna cost?
Yeah.
14, 15 million? What was the cost of installation? We've got 17,100 residents to install meters in?
Yeah, that's...
Do we... That's including the 14 to 15?
Yeah.
Really? Okay. The other thing I'd like to ask, we've heard about the benefits and non-benefits. There must be some non... I was hoping the consultant would give us a clearer picture. Here it is, but however, down here, here are some of the non-benefits. And one I think would be families of more than four or five in a family would be definitely paying more.
Through you...
Is that a fair statement?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it's hard to say, but what I see is it's the high-water users. So, those with leaks are, you know...
Three teenagers.
People haven't had an economic incentive to correct something on the private side if it's not impacting their home, I guess, right? So, it's predominantly high-water users, not... I wouldn't generally say that it's people with two or three kids in the home. I say it's the high-water users, those that are watering lawns, have pools, like, you know, potentially. It's a, you know, it's a small segment of our users. And plus, there's a large correction that needs to occur with an ICNI. The other thing I would say, too, is if you look at some of the post-meter implementation charts as well, like, residential does better over time due to a smaller meter size. They get a less of a rate increase post-2025, which is beneficial for all residents, not just those that are below our average consumption.
I guess my conclusion is there are winners and losers in this game. I'm gonna be a winner. We spent four months away from home at our trailer, and I think there are a couple other people I know on the table that'll do the same. So, you're not using any water at home. You're gonna be just charged a flat rate? There'll still be... You'll still be paying a flat rate?
Correct, yes, correct. You'll be paying a base rate, and that percentage we looked at, we talked about earlier, consider the base rate, consider the cost to pay for the meter, and consider the consumptive rate, which is included in the rate structure.
One quick question, Dan. Do you know of any municipalities have set the rate, found that these conservation efforts were so good, so successful, they had to raise the rates?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, not that I know of offhand, but after implementation and conservation efforts, there's gonna need to be a rate study. But again, it's... If conservation goes down, our costs go down too, right? So...
Okay, thanks.
Point of information, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councillor Gardner.
Go ahead, Counselor Gardner.
The comment was made that, that it would be more expensive for people who have pools. I have a pool. And I have always paid more taxes in water taxes than normally I would if I didn't have a pool. So I'm paying for that pool. So the water meters aren't going to make that much of a difference for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gardner. I'm not sure that was a point of information, to be fair, but your comments are, are taken. Counselor Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have multiple comments, but I think I'm going to wait till a motion is on the table so I can debate that. But since we're talking about the voluntary program, I'd like to learn a little bit more about that. I think it was mentioned it was established in 2007. How did people sign up for this? Like, did, did the city go to certain neighborhoods and offer it? Or did we advertise and then folks came out and said, we want to do this?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, it was voluntary and advertised.
Okay.
Yeah, so people voluntarily chose to have a water meter installed in their home.
Okay. Yeah, I assumed even if we were to go to a neighborhood and ask, they'd still have to agree and volunteer. But I, I was just wondering if the city specifically approached houses. But I guess it was the other way around. Certain residents approached the city. Okay. That was it.
Counselor Dupell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I just wanted to ask a quick question about the voluntary program too. So since it's been established, and I tried to look back, but it, was there updates that were brought forward to council on a regular basis regarding data? And, because I don't remember.
Yeah, absolutely. So through you, Mr. Mayor, I wouldn't say regular information, but there was definitely reports that have been brought back in the past, one or two, from what I recall. That's all I can personally recall offhand.
Okay. And my other question through you, Mr. Mayor, was, was answered. I was looking to see what the cost of installation and how much that would cost each resident.
Counselor Goodenjoe.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for your presentation. It's full of information and I really appreciate it. But I still have some questions that I would like to discuss with you. And I had some answers when Counselor Claude McIntosh asked you some question. But I would like to come back on some items. Please, can you tell me if you come, if you did a comparison between municipalities that went through this kind of process, installing water meters? Do you have these, did you?
Yeah, absolutely. We've done extensive comparisons between municipalities. Some municipalities have done detailed reports post-implementation to show what their average residential bill decreased post-implementation, what the impacts were on conservation. Yes, we absolutely have done that and continue to do that as part of our implementation project.
And, and if I understand, the impact of installing water meter was decreasing the water consumption. Generally, we can have, we can say that this is a fact. It is scientifically demonstrated.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, it's absolutely a fact. The amount varies, but it's still significant in all cases, yes.
Okay, thank you very much for your answer. I have another question, please. I wanted to know a little bit about this seventy-six percent of people in the study that you did, that is going to have a flat or a decreased consumption of water?
Yeah.
After installing. So I think the main problem about this information is how you sample these, uh, family that attend to this program. So I understand what Counselor Sarah Good was asking. Are you sure that the people that, or the family that attend to this program is representative of the whole community of Cornwall? Is there, I mean, is, is it a ten percent gap or twenty percent gap or fifty percent gap of difference?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, it's hard for us to know that. It's, we have two thousand residential water meters installed. Pretty significant data provided. Not all of it could be used, but most of it could be used. So like, yeah, we, two thousand meters are installed, pretty representative of the community. Like I said, it's, it's a voluntary program. The number we've provided here is a very, is, is absolutely an estimate. But it lines up with other, what other municipalities have reported. And it also seems to line up with the inequity that we have in place between ICNI or between non-residential and residential, where non-residential are consuming significantly more and paying significantly less. It, it lines up with what we see there. So does, it seems representative. But can I say absolutely is representative of every residential home? I can't. But it is, I think it is informative and I think it's, it reflects what others have seen as well.
Yeah, so for example, if I take a map of the, of the city, I don't know if you did that, a map of the city and pinning the address of the people who attend to, just to see if those who attend was like in north, for example, majority or the whole city. I think if we do that, it's going to bring more, it's going to make us more confident about this question because we need to understand this point.
Yeah, through, through you, Mr. Mayor, I hear what you're saying, absolutely. We, we could do some of that exercise. At the end of the day, we really won't know what the exact number is unless we have meter data in every residential home. Like, even if it is representative of areas, like, we won't know that exact number until, yeah, until we have meter data from everybody. But like I said, it's, it's representative of what others have seen. And what, you know, what the rate study and what the Conservation and Service Master Plan shows is that the, like, installation of a, of water meters and a metered rate post-implementation will be better financially for the majority of residents in the city.
Thank you very much. Last, last question. When I went door to door, the problem of water meter is about more taxes. So I was wondering if there is any way for the city to apply for grants to support this program, to decrease the amount of money that we're going to pay for installing water meter? I mean, federal grants, provincial grants, is there, did you check?
Uh, through you, Mr., I apologize. Through you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, we've, we look for grants always. We're always looking for funding applications and funding programs that come out. There hasn't been one recently where water meters would be applicable to. So we, there's none available at the, at the current time that we are aware of.
Thank you very much for your presentation and your, and your answers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for interest's sake, I was one of the volunteers in 2007 who had a water meter installed in my home. The home was my former home, so it was much bigger. Family was bigger too. And it was painless installation. It took about maybe half an hour maximum, as I recall. And one thing that I attribute to that water meter is that on one occasion we noticed it was working. It was spinning and looked as though water was being consumed. There was no water being consumed. And then a couple of months later, we found out, yes, water had been leaking in our very old home. And I related that, of course. The water meter knew it when we didn't. We couldn't find it. But had we maybe taken the reading more seriously, we would have found it before a bit of damage had been done. So that was a benefit in our case. But I do have a question for you too. It has to do with, you said that seventy percent, seventy-six percent of users would experience lower fees in the future. But then you followed it up with saying that immediately post-installation, though, there'd be a slight bump or something like this. So can you speak to that, what the difference is? And is it just a one-off and a disappearing bump or?
Um, through you, Mr. Mayor. And Ms. Bailey may want to add to it as well. But the rate increase based off the rate study post-meter implementation, post-2025, which is the estimated timeframe of meters being implemented and the city being on a metered rate, the smaller the meter size, the less of a rate increase is proposed. So most residential homes have a smaller meter size, thus, thus a smaller rate increase.
Thank you.
Counselor Sabre.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Quite informative and interesting, obviously. One of the slides that really caught my attention was from the Ministry of Environment and that. And the underlying part, which basically says that users will pay for the service. But it doesn't say, it doesn't dictate that it has, that payment has to come from meters.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, they advise and recommend that meter is the best practice for, for water. Do they mandate it? Absolutely? No, they don't. But is it recommended as the absolute best practice? Yes.
Okay. The other information on one of the slides was that flat-rate use, fifty-two percent more waste from flat-rate use. Is that from a local study or is that all just part of a provincial average study?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's Stats Canada study.
So it, Stats Canada can be across the country. Stats Canada can be Ontario. Stats Canada can be...
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it's a federal study.
The, um, one of the, one of the lines that has mentioned to us is Cornwall is number two in the use of water. And that, number, six, number six in the use of water. Sorry about that. The question is, does that mean that we are six worse in abuse of water? Or like, you know, like, it, it seems like our rating seems to equate to, oh, you're, you're using too much water for a city this size. You're, you're very wasteful in that. I just don't see that evidence in any of the reports.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, like, again, we don't meter every resident, so I can't, we can't have a exact consumption number. But based off of what we see, yeah, to your previous question, is our, our numbers reflective of what the Stats Canada study showed? Yes, they are. And they're, they're estimated to be higher than that study has shown.
The, once again, the Ministry of Environment?
Yeah.
And that slide talks about a conservation plan. And that.
Yeah.
And once again, like, the only thing that I see is just kind of like some basic elements of, of a conservation plan. Like it, when I looked at other municipalities, when I see recommendations such as alternative day watering proposals, when I look at no watering between the hours of eight AM and five PM and that, I'm not seeing that in the Cornwall plan. Is it there?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. So it's hard to do those without an economic incentive. And that's what the MACP recommends. So it's hard to encourage conservation and get people to conserve when there is no direct economic benefit to conserve.
From all the information that was presented this evening?
Yeah.
And that. I'm, you know, kind of new at this little aspect of representation. But the assessment I have is that conservation becomes a third issue. And that we are looking more at, to, to correct the inequities in the billing and we're looking more at improvement towards operational efficiency. And conservation just happens to be a byproduct. It's not the motivation for this, really.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, I would say they're all motivations for this project. Everything that you've listed, yes.
Thanks, thanks for your question, for the answers.
Counselor Hollingsworth.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just, I don't know if I'm on or not, but I'll just yell. Technically speaking, you could conceivably take the amount of water the city uses overall, let's say on a monthly basis, twenty billion liters of water, divide it by the amount of homes in the city and come up with an average of water usage, correct?
Um, through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, in general, because we have ICNI metered. And we can, yeah, we estimate water loss in the system, yeah. So in general, yes.
My point is, you could take that number, do the same thing, compare it with Belleville or Toronto?
Yeah.
Or Ottawa, and I realize the numbers become considerably higher. But in terms of what we're using per resident or per property versus what other municipalities are using, we can get, it might not be a perfect scientific comparable, but it's based on consistent math. Have we ever looked at that as an option? Because the question is, well, is this the average home or is this the typical home? Well, it's pretty hard to figure out what the typical home is. But you could come up with an average per household that you use to compare to everybody else, correct?
Correct. And through you, Mr. Mayor, we have that and we've done that. And it's significantly higher than the provincial average.
So in terms of significantly higher?
Yeah.
And I don't know if you know the number. What kind of number?
Um, so previous studies have shown over four hundred liters per capita per day and the provincial average being north of two hundred, so two fifty, I believe.
So we're getting close to double the amount of consumption of the average home.
Again, those are like, they're estimates, but yeah, based off the, the rough numbers that you're, the calculations that you're talking about, yes.
So I guess my point is if people are looking for hard data and hard facts based on science and math, that's a pretty scientific mathematical calculation that is irrefutable. You can't reconfigure the math to suit some end sort of purpose, correct?
Uh, correct, yeah. Is it an estimate? Yes, but you're correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Gardner.
So there's a second round. And the numbers and the questions that are being asked, number one, there are a lot of ifs, maybes and whatever. However, to me, my opinion, this is a terrible idea at this time. I'm in favor of water meters down the road, but not now. And I'll tell you why. I said, there are many people right now that are struggling to feed their families with food so high that some are skipping meals in order to pay the rent. And food banks are overwhelmed. The loan for water meters will become an additional burden to Cornwall taxpayers. Another burden, our residents, is that the province has removed the ability to charge development fees. And the city taxpayers will now foot the bill that developers paid to bring services to the new homes and new buildings. So the contractors are off the hook. Our taxpayers are back on the hook. And I looked at the, the amount of costs. It's not time to borrow from water meters right now. I'm not ready for that because of the economy. Our present debt is fifty-two million dollars. Water meters will cost us fifteen million dollars, fifteen eight. Excuse me for, I've got a couple of pages here. A new fire hall...
I think we're kind of out of order here.
No, we're not out of order.
We need a motion.
There's, you need two-thirds majority to re-debate this motion. Am I correct on this or not?
Right now, we're discussing the presentation. I'm entertaining comments from council. Afterwards, I'll ask for a motion, accept the presentation, then we'll move into the actual budget. And I believe before we start that discussion, the CAA will make some comments on your, your question, Counselor Hollingsworth. So for the time being, I will permit Counselor Gardner to finish his comments.
A new fire hall is looking at ten million dollars. That's a couple of years away, but it's going to be a debt. A new art center is going to be about seven million dollars to come. That's two or three years down the road. Added to what we already owe and the water meters, we're looking at eighty-four million dollars. Not too long ago, we sold Cornwall Electric because we owed sixty-five million dollars. And we were debt-free. And now we're looking at these costs, the eighty-four million dollars. This is the taxpayers that are paying for this stuff. We're also looking further down the road for thirty million for the dump. We're looking at forty million, maybe a year or two or three down the road for new water intake. We're up to a hun, over a hundred thousand, a hundred million dollars. We're up to a hun, over a hundred thousand, a hundred million dollars. The taxpayers, the residents of this city are going to end up paying for that. That's why I'm, part of the reason I'm against the water meters for the time being. I would love to see it in two or three years or four years when the economy gets better, when tax, or when interest rates are lower. That's the time to do it, not when it's going to cost us a heck of a lot more money. So for that reason, I will, for those reasons, I'm going to ask, Mr. Mayor, through you, could I make a motion to withdraw the water meter costs from the budget that would, I will probably want to pass? And, and because of all the questions that have been asked and some maybe answers, a lot of good answers, at the end of the day, let's wait till we have the money to do this. Because the water intake, that's a forty million dollar deal, and that could happen anytime, because our pipes are old. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
To answer your question, Counselor Gardner, we'll wait for a discussion on the budget once we discuss the budget, similar to what I informed Counselor Hollingsworth, but we'll have to receive some information from the CAO on how we will proceed with motions on the budget. She has some updated information for us that I think council will find informative. I think discussion on the presentation is finished.
Just a follow-up question. Michael, when we talk about water consumption, are we including households and commercial and industry in that figure that you gave us, or is that just households?
That's just residential.
That's just residential. How do we determine that?
Through ICNI, we have ICNI meters, and the voluntary meters as well as our data from the plant leaving, so we're able to estimate it.
So all the ICNI are all metered?
All metered, yes. Meters that are past life and need to be replaced, though.
One other quick question. The surcharge, as I'll call it, eighty bucks, whatever it is a year residents pay, would that go into a separate fund to pay for the cost of borrowing?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, that, that's the plan, and then after a certain number of years, that will be removed from the water bill. Michael and I would like to maybe present a screen that, or a chart that we put together to show what happens for our residential bill averages when we implement water. So 2022, we have a bill at about eight hundred and twenty, eight hundred and forty dollars, and with cost of living at, I'll say, five percent, that's the green line every year, cost of living at three percent, flat, that's the red line. And then when we see that we've, we've corrected that imbalance through our metered, sorry, you'll see what the metered rate would look like for our residential bills for our customers. So I, I know it's hard to understand all of the inequities that we spoke to in our current rate structure, but they are there. And to Mr. Fotherup's point, we can't tell you if seventy-six percent is the number, but we believe it's quite reasonable from the data that we've collected and from what other municipalities have, have seen. And so, understanding that without metering our entire community, we would not be able to say, yes, seventy-six percent, but it does seem really reasonable. And this chart that Michael and his team put together shows, shows what residential bill would look like in, in 2030 with metered, because they're paying for what they use and the inequities or imbalances in our rate structure have been corrected.
Okay. At this time, can I get a motion to receive the presentation? Counselor Bennett, Counselor Good, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Now moving on to reports.
So the recommendation of the report is that council receive and approve the 2023 water and wastewater budget as presented.
Madam CAO.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. And Tracy, I would ask if you could bring your presentation back up and put on the slide the steps that we have taken to date. Correct, that's the one. So.
Pick that bigger. Some of us old guys don't see as well.
I said okay.
Medium old guys. So it, it dates back to 2019. So 2019, we had a new business motion to come forward with a plan to implement water meters. These are all of the steps that we have taken, all of the reports have been brought to council, all of the studies, the consultants, and all the work that's done. All of this is consistent with the direction that we've received from council. In 2022, just in August, we awarded a contract in the amount of one point five million dollars to Dimeeter that is going to help us implement this project and issue the tender for meters. So as far as postponing the project, if we postpone the project, you're on the hook for that contract for one and a half million dollars. So, we know that there are many projects in the city that we need to prioritize and move forward, but we're also telling council that the right thing to do for the residential rate pair is to put in meters, because most of those rate pairs are going to see a reduction in the cost of their water bill. Okay, so now we want to understand procedurally, how can we move through today? So, water meters are identified as capital project. Council can move a motion to have that project removed from the budget. There's actually no dollars attached to it because we're not envisioning that work yet, but we will likely tender that to the latter part of this year. So there's likely not going to be any borrowing or cost implications in 2023, so you can have a motion to remove that from the budget, that is a motion of council. However, the project to move forward with water meters is still moving forward, unless we get a reconsideration from council that needs two-thirds of majority to change that. So you can make a motion to adjust the budget, but that does not stop the project at this point in time. Staff are doing everything consistent with the direction that we've had from council, and to change that direction would require a motion of reconsideration. And you would also be paying out the balance of that one and a half million dollar contract, because there's not a way to unwind that at this point in time.
Counselor Hollingsworth, quick question on that, just so I'm clear. Motion to reconsider, two-thirds, is that debatable or non-debatable? Somebody makes a motion, two-thirds majority, is council entitled to debate? When do we do it?
Reconsideration.
Typically, two-thirds is non-debatable.
Non-debatable.
Okay, so we know who we're allowed to do and who we're not.
Can I just get a clarification on that response from the CAO? Is it debatable or not debatable?
The motion to reconsider is not debatable. Right, so you take a motion to reconsider, if that motion passes, then following that point, it is a motion of council to move forward on direction with respect to, so the, the motion to reconsider takes the two-thirds, and then following that, a motion is a majority of council.
Madam Clerk.
Maybe if I can just add, Mr. Mayor, to the CAO's comments, that is not a decision that would be allowed this evening. It would require a notice of motion, and then would be debated at the next regular council meeting as a resolution, if council would, would want to do that.
Counselor Heber.
Just a question on that, but could we move another motion to amend the rules to debate it tonight? So we could, we could, it's like a motion after a motion after a motion, but I'm just, because we don't want to wait until the new year, we need the rates, right? So I'm just trying to think of a way that this could all happen today.
Perhaps if I might add just a few comments, Mr. Mayor. So now, if we suspend the rules, we're going against that rule. We're going to be going against the master plan that was adopted by council. We're going to reverse a previous decision. We're going to go against the procedural bylaw. We're going to go against the rule that after one year, a decision's been made, you can't reverse it, and we're going against a sixth rule that the project has advanced and now you're, you're putting a stop to it. So there are six rules that you're going against. Just wanted to put that in perspective.
So follow-up to that. A follow-up, a follow-up to that, we, we need a decision made in order to adopt the budget. The budget needs to be passed before the end of the year, which means then we'd have to schedule another meeting, correct? Between that.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I guess it depends on the motions that are made this evening, right? So if council wants to approve the budget, the budget can be approved this evening.
Without the financing. So there's no dollar amount
Right, yeah.
In the budget currently for financing, because it's estimated that by the time that work is begun, we won't be borrowing yet at the end of 2023.
Okay.
So it's likely a 2024 implication, but the project will begin in 2023.
It just won't with the contract.
Absolutely.
Right, yeah, yeah, okay. Understood.
Counselor Heber, then Counselor McDonald.
I just spoke.
Oh, correction, Counselor McDonald, my mistake, sorry. And then Counselor McIntosh.
Keep going.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if there's somebody who wants to speak after me, this might not be in order, but would it be in order for me to move that we adopt the budget with the master plan enactment as is spelled out in this year's budget intact in the budget? Can I make that motion now?
Motion is in order as long as there's a second.
I will second that.
Counselor Heber.
Made and seconded, thank you.
Discussion on the motion. Counselor McIntosh, you were first on my list.
Well, I had a question before the motion. Can I ask it?
Yes.
Mano, you listed all the rules were going to be broken, will be broken if we go the route. Does that mean we're, I'm really confused in that, because are we doing something that shouldn't be done?
They are your rules that you've adopted, Counselor McIntosh. We didn't make them up.
Okay, no, 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 no. I'm just wondering what kind of challenge it could happen if, hi.
Counselor McIntosh.
So if I may then, as the move of the motion, I'd like to speak to the motion. I'd like to say that the real reason, that should be our primary reason on adopting this budget with the water master, yes, water master plan, water meter master plan intact, is for conservation. Our strategic plan rests, and so many of our policies do, on the principle of sustainability. We look for that as a touchstone to the validity of what we're doing. And water metering is absolutely, it's been demonstrated, not the only, not strictly mandated, but the most efficient way to conserve. And the only reason I think the province didn't say, yes, you have to conserve, and yes, you must conserve through meters, is because if they were to mandate that, then they'd probably have to pay for it. So they're stopping short. It doesn't mean that they don't endorse it, because they endorse it wholly. I was in Montreal on the weekend, and I met on the train coming home a young woman who now, from Cornwall, who now works in environmental defense. We were chatting, and when I mentioned that we were going to be addressing our water and sewer budget tonight, she said, oh, she immediately wanted to hook me up with some of the experts within environmental defense. And I thought to myself, well, I said to her, first of all, I said, we're voting tomorrow night, but secondly, I think we're on track. We've been working on this for years. Now, we have a chart showing we've been working since 2019. We've been working since a whole lot of other people and myself volunteered in 2007 to have these voluntary water meters installed. I thought then that it was something that was going to be happening in the near future, but it's never the right time. Nothing will ever be the right time when there's this fear of cost. But my gosh, in this case, we have the promise of reduced cost, so what's to stop us? Now, I know a lot of people say they knocked on doors and people overwhelmingly said, don't install water meters. If you read the Watson Report, and especially, I think the key pages are the last six, and I thank Natasha for pointing this out to me last, well, before the election, when I called and spoke to her about water metering. As many people who expressed fear of increased cost expressed endorsement for water metering, for conservation. This isn't a foreign value. Conservation is a Cornwall value, too, and I think we'd be seriously letting down the great majority of our constituents who favor conservation. We're not stuck in the nineteen hundreds or even eighteen hundreds. We, we're with the program. And so I urge my colleagues to, to support this budget as it is, and let's full steam ahead on water metering. It's the way of the present. Let's incorporate it into our future. Thank you.
Counselor Hollingsworth.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm going to try to do two things at the same time here. First of all, the water, the worry about meters and then, on the actual budget, I asked you, Ms. Bailey, this afternoon, because I wanted you to kind of be ready, if we went to ten percent on the commercial side, because that's what we did last year, if I'm not mistaken, and we did not subs, we took, we didn't use reserves, no reserves, commercial side is going to pay ten percent, what's the residential side going to look like if we did that? What is their rate?
So currently, just as a reminder to council, what is in the budget book is an increase of two point nine nine percent for our flat and seven point eight nine percent for our metered. And so let me just take a look at slide five. If we hold our metered to ten percent and don't use any money from reserves, if you recall, we're using one point two million from reserves
Yeah.
To stabilize the rate, what happens is our flat rates will increase to nine point four three percent because we've held the meter. Basically, by removing the one point two million, they, you'll notice when we were speaking, when Mr. Counselor Bennett was speaking, we, we could put the non-residential to ten under the scenario of one point one, one point two percent. But as soon as you start reducing reserves, if, if the metered customer is already at ten percent, we're not putting anything more on, onto the customer, unless council decides that they possibly could be more than ten percent. It's not currently our, our servicing master plan. But yes, so we wouldn't want, I, I would say we would not want to see this scenario.
Okay. Then the other thing I asked was, let's leave the rates as they are and only use half of the reserves, so three hundred from one and three hundred, so basically six hundred thousand dollars instead of the one point two. How does that, and I, like I said.
So in that scenario as well, the metered customer has already maxed at ten, so our flat rate customers would come in at six point zero seven percent.
So, that being said, I think I'm going to not bother with the water meter debate till there's some official motion about it, because everybody knows where I stand on the issue, and I have no plans changing my mind. But as far as the actual rate based on this budget right now, my concern is that the economy is really kind of all over the place right now. I think the prime rates at six and a half, the interest rates are, rate of inflation's running around seven or eight percent, give or take. And so, the water plan, the master plan, my worry is that it's a flawed plan based on where the economy is going. It might have been a really good idea four years ago, when rates were, interest was two and a half, and, or the inflation was two and a half, interest were probably four percent, give or take. So my worry is that if you keep using reserves based on where the economy may end up, you can find yourself at a place that's unsustainable. So, I probably will not support the current version of this budget. I would prefer to use half of the reserves recommended and kind of see where we are next year. Understand the master plan. I get it, I'm not saying it's a bad plan, and I'm not saying we should go too far afield from it. However, the economy isn't, it's not where it was when that plan was created, and to start pulling from reserves in a really weird time could potentially leave you in an unsustainable position based on where it's going. So in general, I'm okay with the plan, I get the reserve thing, nine percent's too much. It's too much. So I'll probably vote against this budget, and I would make a subsequent motion, basically the exact same budget, you only, only half the reserves with a you only have the reserves with a 6% increase as opposed to the 2.99%.
Point of information, maybe.
Counselor Hebert.
Could Counselor Hollingsworth make an amendment to the motion on the floor to approve as-is minus 600 from reserves?
Madam Clerk.
Just a thought. Thinking about it.
Madam Clerk, do you have any input?
I think that it would be back to the mover and the seconder because there hasn't been any further debate at this time. So if the mover and the seconder want to amend their motion, I think that, I think that that would be, I think that would be...
In favor.
I think that would be in order. Or council can let this motion go. And if it passes, and if it doesn't pass, then another motion can come back.
This might be another point of order then from the mover of the motion. I would like Ms. Bailey to address the issue of reserves. Are they in an especially precarious situation right now? Do we anticipate the current market having an impact on us this year such that we should refrain from dipping into our reserves? Should we go instead to our tax base? I'd really like to hear Ms. Bailey speak about that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The reason that administration recommended taking some money from the water and wastewater reserve is because we were over our targeted balances with the surplus that we're seeing in 2022. Now, taking the $600,000 from the water reserve has put us under the target balance. But our rate plan said that that would happen. Are we comfortable being under our target balance? I would say no. But there is money there if something should occur. Could something occur that is unplanned that would see a rate increase in the future for our customers because of not having the necessary money in reserves? It could. So we just took a look at all of the different situations that we're seeing in today and the economy in our community and thought that the rate plan says a 5% and a 10%. And by utilizing some money from the reserves, we were able to come to council with 2.99% and the 7.98%. We thought that that was something that our community could afford understanding where we're at with everything else.
Right. The dam might break, and then we're all in trouble. Without that.
Keep putting your finger in the hole, you'll be fine.
Okay, I'm going to return to my speaker's list unless it's a point of order, Counselor Gardner.
Oh, I just want to speak to what was just said.
I, uh, I'm going to have to return to my speaker's list first, to be fair. And then I'll come back to you, Counselor Gardner.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Ngungjo.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, from where I come, I know the value of water. I know what is water. While honorable counsel were speaking, I was taking in my phone to know the list of desert in North America. And we have some desert here, not far away. Less than 2,000 kilometers, we have lake of water. We need to be wisdom, smart. And I really appreciate your work because it's very powerful and has a scientific... I understand what you are bringing around the table. I think as counselor, we have to be courageous and take this decision tonight. I understand that it's a matter of water for our water and money for our residents right now. But we have to be courageous, think about the future. Yes, it's going to be tough, but we have to think about the future, about our kids. That is the question that is bringing around the table right now. Are we going to have the courage to take this decision to manage our water tonight? Or are we going to push it and bring on or push the question of water meter later? Maybe cancel this decision, knowing that it's going to be, it's going to have impact on water management for our kid for next decade. Are we courageous enough for that? From my perspective, yes, I am. I'm starting for the water meter because I know that it's based on scientific decision. So that is my perspective. And I hope we're going to go far away and work further for other question where our residents are waiting for us to take decision. That is my share with you tonight about this question. Thank you.
Counselor Good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question to ask to begin with. The sample property size in the non-residential metered sampling that we see here, the lowest rate is just over 5,000 cubic meters. What kind of business would that be representative of? Like, would that be like a retail store? Are we still talking a larger scale industry at that size?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, do you mind repeating the question again?
I'm curious to know, like, a rough 5,000 cubic meters of water in annual consumption. What type of industry would that be representative of?
It's very hard to say, to be honest.
Would you speculate that a small business, retail store, even maybe a small restaurant would consume that much water?
Yes, yes, correct.
Okay. I just, I want to know the range when I'm looking at the dollar figures and increases for business. I don't want to put business out. And I understand and respect the fact that the rate plans have indicated a 10% increase for the metered consumptive rate. It's also been signaled that they are the largest consumers. In looking at the rate charts and comparing ourselves as a municipality against the other municipalities in Ontario, and my colleagues know this, we are the second lowest in all of Ontario. And we are not just the second lowest, we are the second lowest by law. In fact, in order for us to even cap into third place, we would have to have a 30% increase. I would like to look at the potential of increasing our metered rate further than this. And I say this regardless of the implementation of water meters. As I've said before, I'm not against water meters. I want to make sure that we are being very thoughtful about the implementation and that it is going to be a benefit to our residents. I also want to make sure that we are being competitive in our water rates. And I believe that as long as we keep our increases at a rate that will not change our ranking as far as our comparison to other municipalities within the province, that we will maintain our competitiveness. I would like to see what those numbers would be if they were 15 or 20%. And if that would mean that we would be able to avoid dipping into our reserves for that. Would that be possible to see what the numbers would be?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a calculator on my computer to do that. And so we can, I would just caution that raising the ICNI or our metered customers to 25 or 30% in one year is quite an impact on them. We've communicated through our servicing plan what our transition looks like. And even though the residential or low ICNI flat rate customers are going to continue subsidizing the larger ICNI for the next three years, it's, I'm not sure that, like, an increase of 25 or 30% to a business would be something that counselors around the table wouldn't hear about.
So let's see a 15%. I mean, again, looking at the rates, it barely scratches the surface in terms of bringing our rates to a comparable level with the rest of the province. We have incredibly competitive commercial water rates. Are you able to connect so we can see?
I will. I'm just going to put it on my screen so that you're not seeing 15 different test screens. So I, through you, Mr. Mayor, I believe that you indicated no dollars from reserves, correct?
If we were to go to a 15% increase, what would we need in reserves if we were to keep our, let's say, flat rate at, I don't know, 2.99?
So here, we, I've taken out the contribution from reserves for both water and wastewater.
Yep.
The metered customers are at 14.7%. And the flat is at nine. If we... So the, I apologize because I'm not positive that our calculator will allow us to increase and leave flat at a lower amount. It's, the way that it works is that there is a relationship between how one customer changes to the other customer. And it's, it's too complex in the 18,000 properties that we have to do it on the fly. I'm looking to Paul because I'm wondering if he's able to do it on his system. No, right?
So we cannot increase the metered commercial rates above 10% per your calculator?
We can.
Okay.
If that's decision of council, we just can't tell you what the impact would be on the residential rates at tonight's meeting. So if we would have had some information about, about what that could look like, we would run it through our text, our test program accounting system?
Yeah.
Because that's what we do. Every time there's a rate change, we throw it through our 18,000 and we, we come to these charts. It isn't as easy as putting a number in a, in a cell, unfortunately.
Okay. It's difficult to debate the numbers, obviously, without being able to see the impact that they're going to have. I feel comfortable increasing the non-residential metered rates above 10%. I don't think that is a high enough increase, especially given the fact that they're currently paying for roughly half of the water that they're using. And it's being subsidized by the low, low-use flat rate commercial as well as the residential flat rate at present. I don't believe that the 10% increase makes enough of an impact on that discrepancy. And in the absence of water meters at this time, we don't really have a great system for actually rectifying that discrepancy in fee structure. And so unfortunately, I guess we can't see. I did bring this forward prior to the meeting, so that's unfortunate. My other question to you is in regards to the Schedule A 2023 water rates. Looking at the non-metered commercial and residential rates that we have for each fixture, I'm not sure if that's something that is debatable at all. We spoke about swimming pools. And I think frankly, recreational use of water, I'm okay with seeing an increase on that. I would see our swimming pool rate increase. And I would see, in terms of the commercial sector, I would see the extra tap commercial increase and the urinal increase as well. I'm not a frequent user of urinals, but as I see them, they're typically constantly running with water. So I don't know if that's something that is possible to build into this budget. I had asked these questions before, but I guess.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There's many, many, many different scenarios that can be worked into our calculator. But without knowing council's direction, we can't bring those forward, like, at a meeting and try to calculate it. Like, there's a lot of work that goes in behind. What we've done on Schedule A to our water bylaw is those rates have always increased consistently. So as an example, for the 2023 budget, the combined levy increase for water is at 2.01%. So what that means is that these metered, sorry, these flat rates would each increase 1.5%. Could we increase the commercial first tap, extra tap, et cetera, by something different? We could, but what would that be? Like, there's a lot of scenarios. And, and not only with the 10 or so, or seven or 10 that you see on Schedule A, but picking the ones that we want to increase more than others. Like, it's a, there's no, there's no end to the scenarios that we could look at.
Understandable. I'm just looking even at the residential rate, it's 16.78 for a pool. I mean, that's half of what it costs for a second toilet. And I mean, I understand that toilets are high water users, but naturally, I would assume so is a pool. I know I'm new to the game here, so I apologize for, you know, not having all of these details. But we did go back and forth by email regarding this matter. And I had made a proposal originally to increase the metered rate by 25%, which still would keep us in the second lowest rate in all of Ontario. Unfortunately, that scenario was not, I apologize. That's...
Counselor Dupell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. So if I take a look at what's being discussed around the table, and if we remove the reserves, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Ms. Bailey, if we remove using the reserves, we're looking at a 6% increase, correct?
For the residential.
For the residential, all right. And if we leave it in there right now, we're looking at a 2.99% increase?
Correct, if we don't hold metered at 10.
Right. And so what would have been the budget? Or are you able to say what that would be if we hadn't factored in the water, the cost of financing the water meters?
So there is no cost in the 2023 budget for...
So we would see that in 2024?
Probably 2025.
2025. So my concern is, of course, using reserves. And then I remind my colleagues that if we don't use the reserves, then taxpayers, residential is going to pay a 6% increase, which is compounded year after year after year. And I realize that, you know, it is about conserving. It is about, you know, being mindful and moving forward in the times that we're in. But we also have to sit back and think for a few minutes about affordability. And I think that the residents are owed that as decision makers around this table to think about affordability every time we vote on a tax increase or an item that's going to cost them, cost them in their tax bill every year. And I don't think we're prepared to go to the resident. I'm not prepared to go to the residents tomorrow saying, I voted in favor of a 6% increase. I am in favor of saying I don't want to support the, using the reserves, which I know brings administration to a hard task then because now we're back to not supporting the budget, in my personal opinion. But I will not support the motion that's on the table right now to approve what is before us. And I, if there's another motion or amendment made that we could remove the, using the reserves, I appreciate that because I'm not in favor of using the reserves. But I would say that we would have to have a look around again to see how we can lower that from 6% to something that's affordable for the residents of Cornwall. Because I can assure all of my colleagues that if we were to poll the people out there right now and say, we're putting your water taxes up by 6%, you're going to have very little who come back and tell you, you did a great job. So I'm not going to support that.
Counselor Hebert.
I was about to press a button, there's no button. So I know we're talking about the budget, but we're also, I guess, mainly focused on water meters. So I try to hit both. So if I want to start with water meters, what we saw earlier is that we've already invested $1.7 million heading in this direction. We've been talking about this for years now, decades, since 2007, when we had folks volunteer, right? Because at that point, we were already considering it. That's, you know, the reason we wanted to test it. And so I think we're all pretty much in agreement that water meters will come to our community, whether it's today or in six years, four years. My concern is if we don't do it... My concern is if we don't do it today, if we don't start talking about it today, the fifteen point eight million dollar price tag in six years will be twenty-one point seven million dollars because we all see the cost of everything else going up. So if groceries are going up, the cost of labor is going up, the cost of uh purchasing these water meters will go up. So it might sound like a really big price tag now. Do we want to be around this table four years from now? Six years from now, having the same conversation, saying two point three, uh, twenty-three million dollars is too much? Well, I think uh today's council will be thanked uh and for making this decision, uh, making this difficult decision. And I want to stress that we're elected to make those courageous and difficult decisions. Unfortunately, sometimes they're not popular, um, but that's our role. We're here to make those unpopular decisions. So, but I mean, I, I take comfort in knowing that once these water meters are, are implemented, um, the majority of us will see a savings on our water tax. I'm one of those single-family homes or single individual homes that probably has the same amount of taps as the family of five down the street, and I'm paying the same. Um, and I think once folks will have the usage in their own hands, um, you'll see the same as you see in your, your other utility bills. We pay per usage for all of our other utilities. So if you like your house hot, you're going to pay for that gas bill through the roof. Um, so if you want to take a twenty-minute shower, you'll pay for it. But if you're willing to be a leader in conservation, environmental protection, and climate change, and you want to take steps into your own hands uh and reduce your water consumption, then you, it's a win-win situation. We're saving water and we're also saving money at the end of the year on our, on our um sewer and water bill. So, um, so that, that seventy-six percent that'll see a reduction, I, I think, um, should be thrilled to see this. And I, and I can understand how it's so confusing to, to, I mean, we're living and breathing it day in, day out for the last couple of weeks now, talking about it emails and whatnot, and it's still hard to kind of grasp. But I can understand how it's, if we, we talk about a fifteen million dollar project, it seems like it's going to impact the tax base. But once those inequities are addressed, we're not going to see that massive increase. We're going to see likely some, some stabilized bills for a few years and then a, and a reduction. A reduction that you have the power to create, right? So if you want to be wasteful and you want to water your, um, your driveway, go for it. Um, but you're going to pay for it, just like you do when you've got three teenagers with three gaming systems going twenty-four hours a day uh with your electric bill, right? So you're going to pay for those three teenagers who forget to turn their lights off, who leave the fridge open, unfortunately. So, you know, and I, and I, and I hear the debate, well, families are going to be hit hard by this. Well, families can take matters into their own hands as well and, and be leaders in water conservation and ensure that their kids aren't taking fifteen-minute showers. Um, and so I, I, I think it just, it puts the, the power in people's hands. Um, and there's been some questions about uh online. I've seen people make comments, well, if we all start reducing our water consumption, you know, we still have to pay for the treatment and all of that, so won't we see an increase? But from what I can understand, and maybe this is a question that can be clarified, is for using less water, we're treating less water, there's less operational um budgets or, or items in the budget, and we'll continue to see savings there. So I, I, maybe I can have some confirmation on that.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that's correct. The less water that's used, the less water we have to produce and treat uh at the purification plant as well as at the wastewater treatment plant, as well as within our sewer system and water network.
So savings all around. Um, and I know that there are other communities that implement bylaws to encourage water conservation. We're really having a hard time enforcing the bylaws we already have. And so if you want to water your driveway on a day that you're not supposed to, but it's a weekend, or it's after bylaws uh closed, then no one's catching you. Um, and so enforcement, and I, and I know it may reduce some of the, the misuse of bylaw, you know, it's not completely um, uh, unuseful, but I, I, we're not going to catch everybody. It's not going to make the impact the water meters will make. Um, so I'll support this budget, but if, if other motions come after the fact to play around with the um, using of the, the six hundred thousand or the one point two in reserves, I would be, also be open to seeing a reduction in, in how much we're, we're using of our reserves. I, I do, however, caution against being creative of keeping the rate down but not using reserves because that means then we're taking away some um capital projects. So we can't really take away from operations. We have to find money somewhere to remove, and so that means we're removing a capital project. And I think we're pretty behind in that already. We probably should be doing twice as much as what's in the budget. We have, what's the, what's the backlog? Like fifty million? I can't recall, but.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it's fifty million for water assets, but.
I have a bad memory. I'm surprised I remember that. Um, I guess it's such an impactful number. So I think if we're uh looking at taking something out of the budget to keep our rates low, it's going to have to be from some of this backlog, and I would caution folks against that. But I am interested in looking at other rates without taking from reserves. I just wouldn't want to take from our, our capital projects. So, uh, yes, for water meters, uh, because if we don't do it today, we'll do it in six years, and it's going to cost us more money. It's going to cost the residents more money, um, and all of us. We all live here, I think. And uh I will support this, but could also support further motions for uh different rates. Thank you.
Counselor Gardner.
Thank you. Mrs. Bailey, um, when the auditors come in, um, we keep being told that our, we've, uh, reserves are too low. How is this one point two million dollars, I know you've mentioned it before, how is it going to affect us in terms of beating down the auditors when they come in and talk to us and say, your reserves are too low? If we take, I don't agree with taking reserves, but at the end of the day, what's the impact of this, on this particular budget?
Just going to go to our page. Through you, Mr. Mayor. So our auditors, when they come in, um, they have informed council in the past through the annual uh audit for the city that our reserves are low. The city, through council's uh direction, we have seen uh great strides in that area where we are contributing to our, our reserves and utilizing those reserves for capital purposes. Uh, and uh, so we, we've, the decisions here at council through the budget process have been very good, and our coun, and our auditors know that we can't do everything in one day. When it comes to the Water Works Reserve on page twenty of the budget book, you'll see that we have an opening balance of just under four point seven million. And with the six hundred thousand dollars removed, uh, we have a two point eight million dollar balance estimated at twenty twenty-three at the end of the year with a target balance of three point eight, so a million dollars short. On the other hand, uh wastewater, uh, opening balance is estimated at four point six uh with an ending balance of three point nine, pretty much in line with its target balance of four point one. So our auditor would say that, that we're doing, we're doing well in that, in that area.
Twenty-year-old spin.
Right. And so when we, because we had that surplus or we were estimating the surplus that we presented through the third quarter financial report in, for water and wastewater, and what we're seeing in our community as far as affordability uh with the inflation, we thought that it important to bring those dollars into this year's budget. Um, and uh even though it, it did put us a little bit below our uh target for our Water Works Reserve, the plan again says that we will be dipping below our target balances. But uh as we move forward, the plan shows contributions to.
Thank you. And that was, what I was worried about is paying that back. We're going to take from reserves, how do we pay it back? Maybe we can take the five hundred and thirty-nine to finance that, an overage, but anyway, at the end of the day, uh, so we'll pay that back.
We, we won't pay it back in one year. What we'll do is we'll see what we need for capital. And in those years that we don't have as much capital, we won't reduce uh a rate below zero. We'll make a greater contribution to the reserves for the years that we need more capital because not, but our, our capital is, is like this. Like, our operating is pretty consistent, but our capital will, will do this, depending on what's needed in what year.
I always worry when our reserves are low, when I understand that we are personally responsible for water plants or uh our wastewater plant. If anything goes wrong and we voted against it, uh, we could be personally uh responsible for it. And that worries me more than anything else in the world, so. Yeah, but thank you for the answer. Uh, I'll agree with the, uh, I'll disagree with the budget on other areas because of uh information that maybe this and maybe that, uh, maybe in two years, maybe this, I'm in favor of, of meters, but this is not the time in terms of the economy, the way it's going. So, thank you. Thank you for the answer.
Counselor Bennett and Counselor Salisbury.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just have a, a quick question. We've thrown around so many numbers, I've lost track tonight, so I'm just looking for, what was the surplus dollars for the wastewater? Sorry, if I put you on the spot, I just thought of it earlier. Like, we're taking up one point two million, but what was the surplus from last year?
Uh, the surplus from twenty?
The one that's carried over?
Uh, twenty twenty-two, what we're estimating it to be. I'll just grab my third quarter report.
Thanks. I've been looking for it the whole time and I can't find it.
Fifteen, and I think that was wastewater. And three hundred and something for... Sorry, I have so many reports I go to council. I couldn't, I couldn't keep track. Of course, it's the last one. As so we have estimated, I'm going to just go to our schedule two, uh, three hundred and seventy-five thousand for water and five hundred and fifteen for wastewater.
Okay.
So we are taking more out of reserves with this one point two million than we are contributing to at the end of the year, but not.
No, yeah, I understand that. Thank you very much for the answer. I, for the life of me, couldn't remember, and I couldn't find it. But the point I wanted to make is we're not taking one point two million out of reserves in one shot. We're using eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, that was the surplus from last year. So what we're actually taking out of reserves is quite a bit smaller than what this one point two looks like, if you look at it, that we're using last year's surplus. Um, the two point nine nine, uh, I could look my neighbors in the eye with that increase. Um, I wasn't really a big fan of using uh the full reserve amount. I was thinking of more along the line, Councilor Hollingsworth at three hundred thousand. But now that, when I, when I compare uh the surplus to, to the use of the reserves, it isn't as big a number as I originally thought it was. Uh, and just one comment, uh, we, we've been talking a lot about the meters, how this isn't the right time, and uh, is it the right time, and the cost, the cost, the cost, the cost. There was a slide up there that showed one city in particular that spent ten million um investment in their water meters and then saved thirty million over, since they've done it. Uh, that pays for itself twice. So, um, I, I'm not concerned with the, the cost of, of the water meters. I think that we're going to make that money back. Uh, so to stop the plan now is a non-starter for me. I won't, uh, I won't support anything that stops this plan in its tracks. Um, and as far as the motion that's on the table that I think we're debating.
Yeah, there's a lot of debate going on.
It's gone a little bit sideways, sir, but uh, uh, last week I probably uh would have asked for a, a reduction in the, in the use of the reserves, but now that I've got this number, I, I'm comfortable with it. There's not that much to repay uh in the long run. And the, um, one of the other points that was being made about um increasing the rate of the IC and I customers to bring it up to where it should be as far as what the rest of the province is doing. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, I heard that over the next three years, if we follow the plan we're using, it's going to get there anyway. So, um, just because they're uh, uh, large businesses, uh, doesn't mean that a, a big one-year jump isn't hard to swallow. Um, so, uh, I think this budget uh makes sense to me, and uh I will, if we decide to stick to the motion, support the motion on the table uh from my colleagues, uh, Counselor McDo, uh, McDonald and, and Hieber. So, um, whenever this goes to a, to a vote finally, I will be voting in favor. Thank you.
Counselor Salisbury.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, actually, my friend here, Counselor Bennett, uh, basically asked several of the questions that I wasn't asked with regards to the status of the uh reserves and how the reserves would actually impact on the budget here and that. Um, the other component with regards to the debate being that of water meters, given the uh logistic nightmare presented by the clerk with regards to how to address that, uh, the short answer there seems to be the train has left the station and it is well down the railroad track. So, um, to me, that is basically, um, it's a point of no return in the simple end of it. The uh, the number of motions that have been bandied about, the what-if scenarios and that, has, has clouded the debate quite a bit. Um, but I see a presentation from administration with regards to an increase on the uh water and sewer, and it seems to be affordable. It seems to be possible. It seems to be acceptable to uh, to the residents, I believe, when we uh communicated to them. So having said that and hearing everyone else around the table, I think it's either we call the question, and if it's not, then we'll have the opportunity to see a second motion come forward as to how to move on this issue. But right now, I'm prepared to, uh, to accept the recommendation of administration.
Counselor McIntosh.
Yeah. I'm against, I'm against meters yesterday, I'm against meters today, and I'll be against meters tomorrow. I'm not going to be wishy-washy on it and saying, maybe down the road, I've seen that scenario played many times, it's a cop out. Um, the, I guess the, I, I can count. The meters are going to pass tonight. I've done the numbers. Uh, my dilemma now is do I turn down a entire budget to say, uh, we're not going to, uh, are losing cost, really. When it comes to borrowing money from reserves, eight years ago, this council, or a council eight years ago, voted unanimously to borrow money from reserves to, so we could have a two percent increase in the water bill. So we've done it before. Uh, the two point nine nine rounded off at three. I can, you can swallow that. It's fair. You know, when it comes to, I hate to even go back to water meters game, but we talk about equity. Um, I don't use the bus, but I pay for the bus service. I don't use the rinks. I don't have any, my grandkids are into minor hockey now, but I still sub, do my taxes, I subsidize the rinks, and gladly so, glad to do it. So to be hung up on water meters, water saying, well, it's not an equal playing field. Well, there are many, many things that my tax dollar goes to that really is, I don't, nobody in my family or my neighbors take part in, but we gladly support these systems. Um, but anyway, having what the clerk told us earlier, Counselor Sabrina alluded to, uh, and I say, I know the numbers, and I'm not going to turn down a budget. If I was going to vote against meters separately, I'd be voting against meters separately, and it would move on to the budget, but apparently we're not going that way. And we've been here long enough tonight discussing the subject. Usually lasts about an hour. So anyway, um, we support the budget. Uh, dead against water meters, unfortunately, uh, that ain't going to happen. And uh, that's the way it is. But anyway, I can, I guess something I can live with. Uh, I do, I can say, I have, um, I am surprised at the number of people, especially seniors, I belong to senior curling, who told me they're dead against meters. And these are people who are saying, no, no, we're going to help you, but they're not buying it. So, uh, I don't know. We'll see what happens. Uh, Michael, when you talk about reduced cost in uh treating the water, uh, I guess when it comes to selling water to other municipalities, I'd have to take a look at that and say, is it going to cost us more to give water to outside communities? Um, so, uh, I heard that about uh garbage pickup, we're going to save all kinds of money by going from one system to another? Never saw those statements. Never saw them. Uh, but anyway, uh, I'm willing to support the two point nine percent or three percent increase, having said that.
I'll let you wrap up, Counselor McDonald, but I'd like to just make a few comments.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to wrap up. I don't know if I mentioned, but that young woman I spoke to on the train, she was coming from the COP fifteen conference in Montreal. So she very much was aware of the global implications of our little debate here tonight when she offered to. when she offered to get us help from environmental defense to, to pass this motion. And I thank Counsel Nanjo especially for bringing that to the table, the concept of this is a world issue, not just a local issue. But what is a local issue is how we're gonna pay for it. And I really thank Counsel Bennett and Sabre and others who spoke to using the reserves and also Ms. Bailey. I mean, this is what reserves are for, and they are water and wastewater reserves, this specific package of reserves. And as Ms. Bailey says, and we've done it before, as Counsel McIntosh has said, we've borrowed from reserves before, we'll be paying back into reserves, and that is the way to do it, that's what reserves are for. I would hesitate to think that we would, at this stage of the game anyway, charge our ICI sector additional fees to make this work because we don't want any more shuttered storefronts. And when we know what we hear about rents going up and the impact that has on businesses, I can imagine a late arriving water bill with an anticipated hike, what that would do to the business climate in the city. We can't do that. So, I really think reserves are the way, way we should proceed and finance accordingly. So, I guess that's all I wanna say, and I, I hope counselors, I know, we could pull out paragraphs and we could debate endlessly and get nowhere, except maybe undoing the budget itself. Let's not do that. We have a good budget here and a good water meter master plan, so let's stay the course.
I'm gonna speak briefly after you. Counsel McDonald, sorry, I meant to be speaking before you, but I feel I need to comment on the budget as well. With what we have before us, the motion, I will be supporting it. I think the use of reserve funds in this instance is reasonable and responsible. As mentioned, we did this previously a number of years ago, I remember that, I was around the table at that time, and it is a recommendation that is coming from administration, and it, it's here to mitigate inflation and other rising costs that would otherwise be put directly onto our residents. I think if we were to not use reserves to have a 6% increase in this year would be demanding, far too demanding on our residents, and the, the comparative reserve, uh, increase on our businesses would be too demanding as well. I would not be in favor of increasing the commercial rate too high overnight. Over the course of the last couple of months, I've had the ability to communicate with many businesses, including those in the downtown core, and while it would seem potentially the, the pandemic is mostly behind us, we're not out of the woods yet, and it's been a tough year for business, they haven't fully recovered. And I think increasing their bills drastically immediately is a little bit too much right now. When it comes to water meters, I feel that we've debated this quite a lot tonight, so I, I do worry that I would be repeating a lot of what we said around the table, so I do apologize for that. But I was in favor of water meters at the time. I have consistently voted in favor of water meters, and based on tonight, the presentation, you know, discussion tonight, I intend to continue that. I think it is the way forward. I do honestly believe that there will be savings for residents down the road and that we're setting up the city for success. I do honestly believe that our costs as a municipality will go down once we have water meters in place, and that is important. You have two areas where money will be saved, one for our residents, one for the city. So, I believe we need to move forward with this. That said, I'm gonna call the vote at the motion, but I will ask that the clerk reread the motion before we vote.
Recorded vote, Mr. Mayor?
Recorded vote has been requested.
The motion is that council receive and approve the 2023 water and wastewater budget as presented. Counselors Claude McIntosh?
Yes.
Dean Hollingsworth?
In favor.
Maurice Dupell?
Opposed.
Sarah Good?
Opposed.
Carolina Byard?
In favor.
Counselors Elaine McDonald?
In favor.
Sid Gardner?
Opposed.
Denise Abureng?
In favor.
Todd Bennett?
In favor.
Counselor Gujo?
In favor.
And Mr. Mayor?
In favor.
Eight in favor.
Oh, man.
Budget passes.
So, if we could, we do have the bylaws ready tonight. Perhaps we can have the bylaw read, and then we can get the bylaws approved.
There are two bylaws on the agenda. Bylaw 2022-141 to provide for the supply and distribution of water and a collection of rates for the use of water and water-related services. And the second one is bylaw 142 to establish the sewage service surcharge.
Okay, and a mover, Counsel Hollingsworth, seconder, Counsel Bennett. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carrie, thank you.
Before I adjourn, I just want to comment, I believe this is Ms. Adams' last council meeting with the city of Cornwall. And I thought that was worth pointing out. If you'd like to say a few words, I know this is kind of up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not quite the last meeting that I had. Coming from, coming from my financial background, these budgets are, are projects that we really like to work on. Our team has put together a fantastic effort. I do believe that it's a very responsible budget. But I do want to extend my appreciation to all of council, the mayor, some of our past councils and our past mayors, because I will say that from 2008, when I first came into this city, I always felt like I always had the support of council as a whole and the mayors, and I've truly enjoyed my career with the city, and I truly believe that I've been given a great privilege to be a GM and then later to become CAO. But I also have to acknowledge, you know, not just the elected officials, but our community as a whole, and especially the team in the city of Cornwall and our staff, they have been fantastic. And I'm gonna miss everybody terribly, but I do really appreciate an opportunity to say a few words. I think that the city of Cornwall is headed in a great direction, and we've made some great decisions, and council has made some really, really good decisions. So, I think everything is moving in the right direction, and I wish everybody the best. I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
I would like to give council an opportunity to say a few words. I will go in order of the table, if that's all right?
Sure.
Starting with Counsel McIntosh, if you have comments.
Yeah, a good friend of mine called Paul Fitzpatrick, going day, asked him, I says, after he retired, Paul, what's gonna be your legacy? Didn't even miss a beat, this Maureen Adams, he hired her. You know, I, I said in a previous council meeting that the county's stalling from us fair and square. I still think, though, if this were a hockey team, we'd be demanding two first-rounders, two second-rounders, and a future considerations. You've really done a great job. I know your mom's proud of you. And, you know, I wish you all the best in the world when you go down the street, and we're gonna miss you, and I pity the person that's gonna be coming in after you because it's the old adage, you know, filling big pair of shoes, and you've done a great job. Thank you.
Counsel Hollingsworth.
Thank you, Your Worship. I think I met Maureen when we were in grade nine. Certainly, we were in every single class together.
Yes.
Great fun that it was. And I always thought she was probably gonna do great things, never smart, sharp, really on the ball, saved me a few times in history class, to be sure. And when I saw Maureen as an adult, left Cornwall and would come back, I would lobby at great length, come to Cornwall, apply to the city, I want you to be the CAO, I know you'll do a great job, and typically in these types of things where, yeah, okay, Dean, sure, whatever. And when she came back, I was pretty excited. I thought the city's gonna be blessed with a, a superstar, and having, and I, I've had the good fortune of spending four years together with her, I was kinda always hopeful that I'd get an opportunity to work with her. And the only sad thing I have to say is that she's leaving. I think she's done a wonderful job, certainly in the time that I've been here, she's always on top of things, her answers are forthright, candid, even when you don't always hear what you wanna hear, but that's what you pay your CAO for. As I said, I think our neighbors out in the counties are a huge ground score. Best of luck, Maureen. I know certainly they'll be getting the star that we're losing as it goes. That being said, by the way, Merry Christmas.
Counsel Dupell.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, Ms. Adams, I just wanna say that it's been a pleasure the last 12 years working with you, from one role to the next role. And I think it was the night of our inauguration that Ms. Adams made me realize that I'm getting old, because she looked at my three children and said, I've seen them go from this to this. So, then I realized, yes, it has been a long time. But I wanna wish you all the best with your new position, and as many people here have said, their gain is our loss, and I wish you nothing but the best.
Counsel Good.
Thank you. It's been a short while, but I certainly appreciate the time that you've taken to help get me oriented and kinda show me the ropes a little bit. Clearly, there's gonna be a big learning curve, and I hope that's not the case for you. I'm sure it won't be. They're very lucky to have you, and I wish you the best in your new role.
Counsel Hiber.
I think one of the easiest decisions we ever made as a council was to bring Maureen on as our CAO. There was no debate, no question about it, it was just the smartest move for our community. And I'm so thrilled that when that vacancy occurred several years ago, Ms. Adams put her name forward, because she has been through this ride with us for the last several years, but this ride has been bumpy, but really quite amazing. We have seen so many great things in our city, so much progress, and that would have never happened without your leadership, Maureen. Leadership that we will certainly miss, that will be very hard to fill. And I think we're just gonna be looking to not replace a CAO, but replace a, a Maureen, which is, is quite rare, because you came with such an amazing background in finance, and you've always able, you've always been able to, to speak to us in the most respectful way, but also explaining things in, in plain language, because sometimes municipal talk can kinda go over our heads, but so, so easy to speak to and to understand, and, and, you know, for a new counselor, you still feel new, but, you know, it, it was super appreciated. I am also very disappointed and, and sad to see you go, and as everyone has said, it's the county's win and our loss. However, let's try to spin this around into a positive. And this is really the silver lining. I thought we'd see Maureen retire, so we'd lose her brilliance completely. But we're not completely losing her. She's going across the street, she's going to be at the counties. We have so much great work coming ahead with our neighboring municipalities and the United Counties, and having a champion at the head of all of this will help us significantly in our relationship building with the counties. So, we're not done working with Ms. Adams. This is really the, it's the end of one relationship, but we're, we're embarking in a new relationship that I think she's really going to support us in. So, it's like we're infiltrating the counties in a way, and we're sending an inside gal. Not, not to like, not for things in our favor, but things in favor of a better partnership with the counties, and, and I can't think of a better person to do that. So, sad to see you go, happy that you're not going too far, and we'll continue to lean on you for years to come. Hope you don't retire quite soon after this transition, so stick around for at least the next four years. Happy that we'll get to still work with you, Maureen. Thank you for everything.
Well, Counsel Hiber, that was one powerful speech. Thank you for, for saying all those things that I'm sure we all feel. I just wanna pick up on the association with the counties. You'll be working down the street, as Counsel Hiber said, and there are so many eateries on this main street, that hopefully we bump into you often at lunch hour, just spontaneously we'll know that you're still here in the city, still working. For my part, I, I want to acknowledge that I think you are a tremendous leader, an extraordinary leader. And by that, you have never been the noisiest person in the room, and you probably don't aspire to be, but I believe you're probably the most effective person in any room in which you're working. It seems to me that when it comes to progressive ideas, comprehensive ideas, and community-building ideas, your support for our team of administration is so complete and so thorough that all these good, best ideas keep coming forward and keep getting support. So, you're very much, you've been a tremendous strength of us and of the administration team, and we'll certainly miss you, and we look forward to working with you again, as Counsel Hiber says.
Counsel Gardner.
Thank you. Maureen, you'll be missed, okay? I got a call this afternoon from the Montreal Canadiens. They wanted to know if you could go and work for them in finance? And I said, nah, she's going to the counties. I have to repeat what Bill DeWitt said. This is the best council, or was the best council, that he had ever worked with. In the early years, you know, or the late years, you've led us there. When he said that, I looked at, I looked at you in your chair and thought, there's the leader right there. So, thank you for that, and thank you for having an open door. Whenever I had a question to ask, you were there with the answer. Tracy Bailey's the same way, but, you know, we're talking about you right now. But thank you for being with us for the number of years you were here. Much, much appreciated. Thank you.
Counsel Sabre.
Ms. Adams, I'm feeling short-changed here.
Yeah.
When someone asked me to run in the municipal election earlier this spring, I asked, give me a good reason as to why I should run. And the response was, you'll be working with Maureen Adams. You're leaving. Was it something I said? I wish you all the best at the counties. I know the interaction between the counties and the cities is tremendous. There's a whole world of potential for the two partners there, and under your leadership, I think we'll realize it. So, I'm looking forward to, I'm on the, the Services Committee with the United Counties, so I'll get to see you. And I just wanna advise you about something Elaine said. I understand they don't take lunch at the counties, they work right through. All the best, Merry Christmas.
Counsel Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For me, it's been four years of actually working with you, and they've been amazing. One thing I always appreciated, and I can't remember how many times I'd be out with friends on a Saturday night at 7:30, and somebody asks me a question about the city, and I'm like, I don't know. So, I pick up my phone and I send an email, and the first line is, I don't expect an answer till Monday, but, and I send these emails because I won't remember on Monday. And then about 8 o'clock, the phone will buzz, and there's an answer from Maureen. I'm at, you know, a restaurant with my friends, I'm, well, here's your answer. Looked like a genius, so thanks for that. I was also the guy that sat in a chair in the back there for quite a number of years watching council meetings, and there was a, a few times where I would send an email to you about something I'd saw happen, and I got a response, and I always thought, yeah, that's pretty cool for, that just a regular resident could send an email and get a well-thought-out response to, and I think just goes to show the respect you had, not just for your colleagues, but for the residents of the city of Cornwall. So, as a resident of the city of Cornwall, thank you very much for that. I, I appreciated it then, and I appreciated it the last four years as well. I know you're only three blocks down the road, so if you hear this in your office, open the door, and good luck to you and Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Counsel Nanjo.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I, I would like to start by, I was in the same situation as you, Counsel Sabre, and somebody asked me to run for the council, and I was, why? And the, the person told me that, oh, the, the team is very, it's amazing there, and your name popped up. I was like, I don't know her. And she said she's very, very amazing. So, I didn't know you, but I know what you did before knowing you. So, you are very, very positive, you had very, very good impact in our, in this community. A lot of people expecting, are speaking about you positively. So, honestly, I was honored by the short time that we had to work together, and I feel so, sorry, because we just have like two months of work, or less than that, but I know that, as I heard, you are not going far away, so maybe we're gonna, I'm gonna still benefiting from your expertise. So, thank you very much for all you did for this amazing community, and I wish you the best, and I know that the best is coming for you. And yes, Happy New Year and Merry Christmas. Thank you very much.
Ms. Adams, I wanna take the opportunity, thank you for your decades of dedicated service to the city of Cornwall and its residents, all the long hours you've put in, in the office and in meetings with us here at council, answering our questions and making sure that we were well informed to make these decisions. we were well informed to make these decisions. And, you know, this goes for many councils. And I think your contribution is invaluable to the city. As well, you made history. You were the first female CIO of the city of Cornwall, and I think that needs to be noted. That's an important milestone for the city. So you'll always have that as well. And I want to thank you personally for these last couple of weeks in helping me get established and set up as mayor. Your support and advice has been invaluable. And I want to thank you for that. I wish you all the best as you move down the street to our neighbors at the counties. And we will continue to have a working relationship, just in a slightly different caliber. And I wish you all the best there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Councilor Hebert, Councilor Bennett, all in favor. Carrie, thank you. We are adjourned. Good night. Bonsoir.